Remotely so that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate. So we have, um, we have an agenda, but I'm gonna take, uh, well, actually, before we do that, anybody here to comment on anything that is not on the agenda? Alright, so, uh, hearing no comments for anything that's not on the agenda. I wanna take an item out of order, uh, just because the person who's here joining us for it has a meeting that they have to get to at seven that they also need to be prepared for. So, uh, if you look at the agenda, item, um, item five Z planner introduction, which is our, uh, our exciting news of the year so far. So let me reposition my screen a little bit so that hopefully the board and as many people in the room can see. The, uh, the, the big news of the month, of the year of my time on the planning board is the town has retained a part-time planner, a part-time high-level planner. And he is right here on this call. So can you introduce yourself and say a little bit about yourself for us?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. So, um, hi, everybody. My name is Alec Weed. Um, I have been a planner for going on six years now. Uh, for that, I got my master's in regional planning out at EMAS and PERS, uh, as well as my bachelor's in sustainability or sustainable community development. Um, I have a passion for smaller-sized communities. As it turns out, I was with the town of Orange, about seventy-five-hundred. I'm with the town of Foxborough now, where I serve land use director overseeing building health and planning departments. Um, and when the opportunity presented itself to come join your team and support the work that you're doing, help formalize some procedures, process teams, help with the strategic planning, uh, I jumped on it. It's the work I love doing. It's very exciting stuff. And, uh, from what I've seen so far, you have a great team to work with. KT Law's a good attorney. Uh, you have an esteemed consultant in the back bill who I already worked with in, uh, in Foxborough over here. Um, and your chair, as well as your town administrator, are already great to work with. So I'm looking forward to getting to know all of you and helping you maneuver your way through projects and strategic planning moving forward.
Excellent. So for the benefit of the board and for the public, Alec is retained for, what is it, five to seven hours per week? And specifically to look at high-level planning tasks, not for administrative work. We still have a posting for a land use clerk or coordinator job, uh, that we are still working to fill. Uh, Alec is, is here to help us figure out better ways to push paper, not to specifically push paper for us. So I, I'm really excited about this. Um, the select board asked me to, um, to, to go to their meeting on Monday and, and talk about this, and, and the analogy that I gave for that, I'm gonna throw it again now for the benefit of the public. Um, but the, the state and all of the case law that's come out has made planning really, really challenging. It, it is no longer something where a citizen planner can do alone and get it right. And w- we've seen that ourselves in terms of the trouble that we've had trying to get things through the Attorney General's office. And considering that the former chair, Alice, is one of the more, um, before she retired, was one of the more respected real estate litigators in this part of the state, and we still had trouble getting stuff through the Attorney General's office. It's really a testament to how challenging the process has got. Uh, the analogy that I gave at the meeting is that it's like fixing cars, like, in, in the eighties, it was easy to fix everything. Now, if you wanna fix something brand-new, you gotta be a computer programmer, a mechanic, an electrician. It's, it's intentionally set up in a way to make it hard to fix it, and that's really where planning and zoning has gone in the last twenty years. So, uh, I'm excited about what we're gonna be able to accomplish. Alec's first, uh, first kind of cycle with us is going to be a bit of an assessment phase and information gathering, where he just kinda gets to know us, gets to know the town, looks at some of our historical documents, like the, uh, the Quab and Municipal Partnership document, um, the Row Eleven Plan, like, all of that kinda stuff to really kinda get his feet wet. And, and just kinda get a good idea of the issues that have faced us and, uh, and what other people have said about them in the past. So, behalf of the board, welcome to the team, and we're, we're all really excited to, uh, to have you here and have you working with us and, um, move towards modernizing our process. So, I don't know if anybody on the board has anything else they'd like to add to that?
Welcome aboard.
Excellent. So if you've gotta hop to go get ready for another meeting, this is a good time for you. Uh, unless there's anything you wanna hang around to catch, but I gotta turn the screen back around so I can run the meeting.
Good stuff. Great to meet you all. Looking forward to working with you.
Alright, so moving back to the, uh, the regularly scheduled agenda, minutes acceptance. Now, there were minutes placed in the drive. Fortunately, Patricia's out on vacation this week, so we don't have our traditional binders with everything. It is neatly organized and collated for everybody, and I got out of work minutes before getting here, so, um, the minutes were put in the drive, circulated to the board ahead of time, and are still there available for review. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at 'em. So with that said, um, I, I would like to call for a motion and a second, and then pause for discussion for any edits.
I'd like to put a motion that we accept the minutes of, uh, July the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, as, uh, presented in the, uh, in our shared drive.
One or second. Excellent. Here in a first and a second, uh, corrections, amplifications, anything for the minutes? Okay, it looked pretty good. It's pretty light. Didn't see anything.
Yeah, I didn't see anything whenever you hit it, please.
Alright, so, uh, hearing no further discussion, calling a vote.
Shaggy, aye.
Amelia, aye.
Jack, aye.
And the chair is aye, the minutes are accepted. Thank you. And thanks to Patricia for putting those together. Moving down on the agenda, um, we have, uh, we have really two new items for tonight. Uh, we have an A and R from the Country Hen. So can you guys present what you have and what you're looking for and what you're hoping will do?
Good. Excuse me.
Oh, and, um, I'd like to, uh, also call up Bill Murray. Bill Murray's the planning board consultant who advises us on, uh, technical matters. So we'll be right behind you guys.
Okay. My name is Julian Vodrova from New England Environmental Design, and I'm here representing Country Hen on a no-approval-required plan off of Williamsville Road. This is the chicken farm down the street that has all the, the three big barns. And then there's the, the old original farmhouse, and they had built a, uh, a facility that goes with the farm. And what we're looking to do is create two lots out of the large parcel. And we have area and frontage for the two. We have lot number, we created, we call it a lot two. Uh, has eighty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet and three-hundred-and-seventy-three point two-seven feet of frontage. So we meet zoning and all our setbacks are all set so that we meet all minimum setbacks for, for the dwellings themselves. And then the second lot, or the remaining land, will be the farm with all the acreage in the back and the facilities that were built in the last, within the last five years servicing the farm. Um, the reason, one of the main reasons is they wanna keep the farmers' farm, and these two real residential, single-family homes, they don't, it's not part of their farming wishes at this point.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's what we've got before the board.
We bought that property to get all of the property, and now we need to split it up.
So how all this came, came, but this, this used to be, there was a, there was another house here at one time. I don't know if you're all familiar. And Country Farm, Country Hen bought it and took the house down and did what they needed to do. Now we wanna just, these two have been combined, and we're creating a different lot. So there used to be a lot, there used to be two lots here, and now there's gonna be two lots, just a different shape.
Okay, so it's, it's two lots that you're looking at to create?
It's two lots. This parcel, of course, this, this parcel here, this has been created. This is part of their ownership, but this parcel has a deed with a description. So we're not creating any new lines on that. It's always been a parcel. So we're not creating a new one. We're not looking to change any of it, so we're not falling under any, um...
No subdividing.
No subdividing bylaws are being questioned.
Just, it is what it is. It's been that way since nineteen oh four.
So I, I wrote a, and I sent it, and I'm hoping you all got it. Just a kind of chronological, um, synopsis of what has gone down. And that what we're asking this board to sign are these two lots, 'cause that lot is already in its, it's got a description and it's, it's its own parcel, and it has a house on it. So we have two houses. This one has a house, this one has a building, and this one has an actual residential house on it. But that's, we showed it on a plan as a parcel, is not creating a new line. We're just showing it that that's one of their, their pieces of land, 'cause it felt that bit. It would probably be asked, what about the house on the side?
Okay, I don't, um, when, when did you send the adoption?
I guess eight.
Don't see it in the...
Yeah, I don't see that on the drive.
That's okay.
Uh, I got one copy, and it, uh, I can read it out loud, or you can read it out loud. It gives a whole chronological order of...
I mean, yeah, you're welcome to read it out loud to the record.
So, this letter is a response to the email received from Patricia Law on August fifth, twenty twenty-four, regarding some comments with parcel one being number three Williamsville Road and showing on the plan. The lot known as parcel one had a building on it in the year nineteen thirty-seven, and this lot has remained a separate lot throughout the years. Please note, this lot predates any zoning regulations that would be considered as pre-existing non-conforming lot. Reference to tax map five C parcel ninety-three, where this lot has been treated as a separate address and taxed as a separate address. This lot, parcel one, is shown on our plan to provide a registry quality plan of existing lot, and that we are not creating any new lot lines or subdivision concerning this parcel. This parcel will remain as-is, and the plan is clearly shows the existing lines of ownership only. These properties have been under separate ownership until nineteen ninety-three, when Larry L. Nelson purchased the home located at three Williamsville Road, would already own the house located at seven Williamsville Road since nineteen seventy-one. There has not been any actions to merge or reconfigure the lot, two lots, which still remain as separate parcels. Both properties were recently purchased by the current owner, Lebersky, Inc., in two thousand fourteen, which will still remain as separate as described in deed parcel one, maintaining the original boundary as described in nineteen thirty-seven. Both properties are shown on the Town of Hubbardson tax maps as separate parcels, map five C parcel ninety-three and one oh one. They are both taxed independently from each other. The plan of land that was prepared by our office only shows parcel one as it has been described since the original existence. This parcel does not create any, create or change any property lines for parcel one. This lot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot dating back to nineteen thirty-seven. The purpose of our plan is to reconfigure lot lines for houses located on lot, on number seven and number nine Williamsville Road. Each of these lots will have adequate frontage, area and zoning requirements as stated in the Hubbardson zoning regulations. These structures are located on assesses map five C parcel one oh one and can be subdivided under MGL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one P of the subdivision control laws. Lebersky, Inc. purchased the property located on nine, nine Williamsville Road in two thousand sixteen. The purpose of the plan is, that has been submitted, is only to revise the property lines between seven and nine Williamsville Road. In my opinion, parcel one can remain as-is with no alterations to the original property lines. And this is signed, stamped by Bruce Wilson, Bruce Wilson, Jr., registered lands of that. So, that was, I received a mess, a email from, from this office with a concern on showing, show us why you think what you're doing is what you're doing. And I believe that answers it.
Okay. Um, before we get to the A and R checklist, uh, Mr. Murray, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. I looked at this earlier, and they can't do what they're proposing to do. It's real simple, and it's extremely straightforward. It's called the merger doctrine. It's a basic... Pardon me?
Can, I have a question about that. The merger doctrine applies in Arizona.
The merger doctrine applies across the state. It doesn't matter. So when Lebersky, Inc., and I'm sorry if I didn't get it right, bought all the property, and they bought an adjacent piece of property that touches their principal piece of land, they bought that lot one. The minute it became under the same ownership and control, it was a pre-existing non-conforming, but they bought it under the same ownership and the same name, which means it's now merged as part of the overall property, and they can't go backwards in time and create a non-conforming lot, which is what lot one is. So you cannot sign, in my opinion, you cannot sign that A and R because they are trying to recreate a pre-existing non-conforming condition, and you can't go backwards. They created it, they made it conforming when they combined it with all the other land of the farm. And I'm sorry, gentlemen, this isn't me. This is, this is the merger doctrine.
If you, if I could, if you would have check- aborted, which is the terminology that I'm accustomed to, in other words, separate ownership entities, 'cause I'm taking it lot one does not conform.
Parcel one.
Parcel one. It's gotta be less than two acres or doesn't have the frontage, so, so, you know...
The big but on this is, in this town, how many houses can I have on one lot? How many residential houses can I have on one parcel? One. You're saying now I have two, so I'm conforming, correct? Wrong.
You, you purchased it with adjacent property.
Doesn't matter. There's two houses on this property. This was on its own parcel. Uh, chapter, do you have the M, the, um...
Yes, MGL chapter forty-eight, section six. You can't do what you're doing.
May I, may I suggest a possible, uh, solution, um, is to redraw your plan to increase the area of parcel one so that it becomes conforming?
The problem...
It's impossible.
It is, okay.
Because of the farm, the whole, there's, there's reasons behind wanting to do what we wanna do.
Sure.
Okay. Reason number one is we have an employee that lives in that little parcel one. She's been there for, I don't know, four, five years there now. If we sell that all off as one, what's gonna happen is she's gonna lose her home. So that's, I know that doesn't matter with what you're saying, but this is the reasoning behind why we're trying to do it. Number two, so we have to maintain biosecurity on that farm. So...
So you have to maintain what?
Biosecurity.
Biosecurity, okay.
So USDA, you know, all of our certifications, all of that stuff. It's a, it's a huge burden to the Country Hen to own and maintain this property, especially now. Our egg processing is going away, our feed mill is going away, two-thirds of our employees have gone away, and it's, it's a financial burden. So we're trying to do something to help the employee. Town loses nothing. They're still gonna get the same tax revenue as they've always gotten. They've given us a separate tax bill all these years, since it's been there. Same thing with, with nine and the balance. It's a, it's a...
We're not creating, we are not touching...
We're not gonna build anything. We're not gonna change anything. I understand that the lot doesn't conform, but the lot never did conform.
Right, but you didn't do it right. And they can't sign that. They can't sign something that's potentially...
So if I take parcel one off...
So, point, point of order to interrupt here, the chair is trying to speak. Uh, and also, please limit your discussion through the chair to everybody. I don't think anybody on the board is not sympathetic of what you're trying to do and doesn't want to try to find a way to do it. However, we need to be in a place where we actually have the legal authority to, um, to endorse the A and R. So it sounds like perhaps there's some thinking and research that needs to, uh, to happen on this, and if, if there, uh, I, I hate to use this expression because it's overused, but if, uh, if you could get any kind of legal opinion that we could present to town council where we have the authority to do it, um, I think you would find the board is generally supportive of trying to help people out. But the problem with A and Rs is it's a statutory construction, and if we don't follow the strict statutory construction, we don't have the authority to do it.
We're not creating, what this board is signing is a plan where I'm creating a new lot line. I'm not creating a new lot line. There is a deed recorded at the WISMA Registry of Deeds that defines this parcel of land. It just has happened to be owned by the same person. If I was using this and changing this line one hundredth of a foot, you are absolutely correct. I cannot change that shape. I've done this in other towns. I've had the situation where there's two houses on one, on one piece of property. There's a, there's a chapter in MGL, chapter forty, allowing, if there's more than, 'cause a lot of times there were two houses on one piece of property.
Correct.
And then people, you know, when there aren't two houses on it, we're gonna try to do what we can. There's an allowance to subdivide that house off and not conform because most likely there's not an obligation to conform under chapter, uh, section M. But it's a move, that's a moot point because we're able to, this is already created. If this wasn't created as a parcel and defined, I wouldn't be sitting here before you asking for an endorsement.
I mean, so, from, from, from a factual standpoint, I appreciate what you're arguing. But at, at the same time, the application was also filed for the creation of three lots, and...
Oh, I, I, I changed that. That's a mistake.
And the, the fee that, you also paid the fee for the creation of three lots. So that's what's currently been presented to us.
Well, I'll present, I'll, I'll pull that out and re...
Yeah, so...
Redo the application. She told me it was three lots. That's why I filled the notice.
Well, I went into the office and, and had her, she looked and saw, but she didn't understand. This is a parcel. It's not called a lot.
Yeah, so it's, it's currently in conflict with your testimony. So if, if perhaps you would like to withdraw this for the moment, make some of the corrections, work through this with the office, also with our new planner who just started tonight, who could also opine on this issue, uh, if there is any way to work with this. Uh, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere constructive just running around the table now because we have conflicting opinions. We need to do some research. Your application conflicts with your testimony. I think all of those things...
Correct my application in one second. It's corrected.
Yeah, um, I think all of these things need to, need to be addressed by Mr. Murray.
Well, what are these things? Give me a, give me a list of these.
Just, just a moment. I recognize Mr. Murray.
So the analogy that he gives you, that there are two buildings on one lot, is valid under state law. We've done it before. We had a house, and we had a barn with a little apartment attached to it. The whole lot was twenty thousand square feet. Zoning was forty thousand square feet. They existed that way prior to the adoption of zoning. They were grandfathered. They existed that way prior to the adoption of zoning. By buying the property and combining it, when he bought it, he created a conforming situation. You can't sign to uncreate a conforming situation.
May I ask a question, just to clarify it on my side? Parcel one, even though it was separated one point in time, what I hear you say is it's by the purchase of all of the property that is here, therefore melded and became really one big giant lot.
It's basic planning law. It's called the merger doctrine. A non-conforming lot, when added to adjacent, even if the adjacent lot was non-conforming, it's less non-conforming when you add the adjacent property. In this case, they made, they had land and frontage sufficient to make it all a conforming entity.
I, I'm, I'm just trying to go through, through the terminology myself so I can get my, my head around this here. This parcel one, obviously, was a separate lot at one point in time. When it was purchased collectively with what is now the new piece of land where the other building is and, and where the, uh, chicken egg farm, uh, has been built, all of that now suddenly became one lot, in, is, is what you're saying. And that is based on the doctrine that you have, uh, that, that, that you have stated, right?
Right.
And so as a result of that, when that happens, is that, is that an implicit? What I'm trying to understand is, is that an implicit action that takes place that you don't even have to record?
Correct.
Okay. And so therefore, even though it's not recorded at the registry of deeds as such, the fact that all three are now together suddenly becomes a giant lot. And so by splitting parcel one, you now are trying, and I apologize if I, if I say, if I sound like I'm...
Oh, okay.
I'm imposing on you, but what I'm trying to understand here, what you're stating though is, is that by, by putting parcel lot out again, you are indeed creating a non-conforming lot, which was not the case before because for all intents and purposes, it had all been merged together.
Correct.
Okay, correct. Now I understand the, the situation. Okay.
They could have bought as...
They'll come at you.
They could have bought separately...
Had they bought it under a different name or, it's not name, it's control or ownership, according to the courts.
Like a trust or something like that.
Had they checkerboarded, then this would not be an issue. But they didn't. It's under the same name, so it's a self-created hardship.
So it's a technicality.
Yes, very much so.
I, I understand now. Thank you for clarifying.
Well...
I, I, I honestly don't feel, is it time for us to do some...
Well, I, I just wanted to, to hear from the applicant again.
I have just one more saying this. Having all said that, we are now also violating the zoning bylaw of the Town of Hubbardson by having two houses on one lot. So how does that fit into this whole scheme? When there is clearly a parcel, a deed, a description of this parcel, and we're not changing it? I could technically draw a plan of land of ownership, call it an E D one X plan, and record it at the registry of deeds, showing not this split-up we're asking you guys to sign, but this parcel and this parcel. They're both owned, but it's owner, parcels of land of ownership. I'm not creating any new lines. Once I touch a line, that opens up a different can of worms. That's one statement. And then the second one is the, the process of two houses on one lot, it is allowed to subdivide a house off of another parcel if these two houses are on a piece of land, 'cause it's in violation of all zoning in all towns. So I guess we're asking for the board to help us on this one, 'cause between a rock and a hard place here.
We'll come, come back to factor it in, I suppose.
Would it be a possible alternative for the, for the applicant to consider a variance with the zoning board of appeals to, uh, consider what they're asking is to create a non-conforming lot for whatever the non-conforming matter, right, might be? Is it frontage, or is it acreage, or is it both?
Both.
It's both?
No, well, we have frontage. Oh, no, we, no.
You have two hundred feet of frontage and...
You don't have two hundred feet of that.
Okay, so you'd be looking for relief from the zoning board of appeals for a frontage variance as well as a square-footage variance?
Yeah.
And if the zoning board of appeal were to approve that, which is a different body than we are, then I think that would potentially solve their problem and relieve us from any consideration about this merger doctrine. Bill, do you, you agree with that pot, potential?
Yes, they have to, because they combine them, they now have to, the burden is on them to create a less non-conforming condition. So reusing the existing lot lines, in my opinion, if the zoning board grants it, they grant it. But that's not the correct way to do it. The correct way to do it is to make it less non-conforming.
But they, at least, excuse me, through the chair, that, at least the zoning board of appeals has that authority. We don't.
Yeah, we have no, uh...
We have to enforce the zoning laws as they are written. We don't have flexibility.
We have no variance granting authority.
But there's two houses on this property, so it's in violation.
Yeah, but that's not, that's, that's not the matter that we are trying to resolve.
If there's parcel, if I take this parcel off, if I take this parcel off this plane...
Point, point of order.
Yep.
Interrupting the chair again. Um, so to, to my earlier point, statutory authority is ultimately the problem because we live in a society, and also in a town, where if people don't... statutory authority is ultimately the problem because we live in a society and also in a town where if people don't like particular things, they do tend to sue over it. So, um, when, when we say we want to make sure that we're on an appropriate statutory footing with authority to do it, it's not just to protect us, it's also to protect you because at, at the end of the day, the people who have to defend whatever are the applicants. So, um, we're, we're not trying to be estreperous or, or just trying to be difficult. We're just trying to make sure we actually have the illegal authority to do what you're asking. We all wanted, the, the board tries to help people as much as possible. I'm confident. The whole board wants to do it if we can find a way where we have the illegal authority to do it. So please don't misinterpreting what my resistance here is. So if there is a pathway where we can have the authority because by, by statute and by law, the Hubbardson Planning Board has no authority to grant a variance from zoning. We just can't do it. Only the, the ZBA can. So the, the mechanism that I'm hearing, unless there's some other clever lawyer that can work around it, is we would need to get a variance, or excuse me, you guys would need to get a variance from the ZBA on the frontage and on the space issue. And then from there, we can potentially grant the A and R.
It's the town board, ZBA?
So at this point, we withdraw this from this board.
Yeah. Um, would that be, we haven't had.
The whole application, the whole.
We haven't had this exact problem come up from a procedural standpoint. Would we, would we withdraw and start over?
You have a twenty-one day, twenty-one day time period in which to endure, accept and endorse an A and R. And if you don't act within the twenty-one days, they have the right to take it to the town clerk who endorses it by non-action of the planning board. So you do have to either deny the application or let them withdraw without prejudice or withdraw in any way that they want.
Okay. So yeah, you could formally withdraw it.
With, and with, would we, would he receive his feedback or is that gone?
Um, that is not a decision of the board. Um, I don't know what the town's policy on that is.
I'm sorry, it's.
Well, if you're not acting on the plan, then how can you take the money?
Right.
The fee was paid. The question is, is can they, by, by, by taking this back, are they recovering the fee?
You'll have to, well, traditionally you, you, you make a fee for, to cover the administrative costs of the town. The town has acted on it in administrative manner. Uh, they maybe do some portion of the fee back, but yeah, I would run that past the town administrator.
Yeah, Nate would, uh.
It's sort of like making a building permit application. He says, no, you can't do it. He doesn't traditionally give you the fee back.
Uh, but I'm sure if you talk to Nate, um.
Yeah.
Uh, you guys will be able to figure something out. But we don't have the authority to make any kind of commitment on that.
That's fine. That's fine.
But, uh, but yeah, uh, so just noting for the record here, so it's clear on the record in the minutes, the applicant is withdrawing the.
No, no, I was asking. I'm not saying that yet. John, can we take a minute and talk about this?
Yeah.
Can we take a two second?
Yeah, sure. Um, you, you are the only thing that's on our agenda for tonight. So we can, we can take a five minute recess.
That would be wonderful if we could.
So we'll, uh, we'll re-adjourn at, I don't know, seven thirteen. Yeah. Reconvene. Few more seconds before we call that. All right, calling back to order, the meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board. Uh, once again, reminding everybody that planning board meetings are digitally recorded and broadcast live.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna ask the board, we're gonna continue with this because we're gonna take advice of going to ZBA. And I know to go to ZBA, we need a reason why we're going to ZBA. Typically, it's a, uh, trying to get a building permit and you're denied. So you go to ZBA for relief through the building enforcement officer. I believe I need something from this board saying that we won't sign this plan and the reasons why. So we can take that to ZBA and ask for a ZBA or does that, does that make sense? So there's not, so we're not tripping over each other. You guys, you, you understand what you see, but you can't sign it. We understand. Let's make it so that ZBA says, we will grant this non-conforming lot. Now, all the literature and all the information we need for that, but we need something to stop that process, which would be a denial of some sort. If, I, I think we have to go that route and try to, that's what they'd like to try to.
Okay, that, that seems to make sense to you, Mr. Murray?
Uh, um, I don't see any problem with the planning board, uh, giving an opinion or advice to the applicant, but I would remind the board that it's the applicant's burden of proof. And in my opinion, they should have a landlord attorney advising them and on this process. It should not be the planning board advising them.
Is, is there, um, um, is there a prejudice period on the A and Rs? Do you know? Like there are with special permit applications or?
No. You, you, you have an obligation from the date it's filed and accepted by the town clerk to sign it within twenty-one days. There's no appeal.
Okay, so, but if, so if we deny it, it's denied without prejudice. So, or to make sure we wouldn't be denying you for two years.
They can file it, they can file it the next day. No, there is none. No, there is none of that.
Okay. Okay.
So then that doesn't give us any support from you guys, according to you.
It's a recorded meeting.
I'm trying to, you, you've been doing enough, well, through the chair. Through the chair. I don't need to talk to you. We're just trying to streamline this, not streamline it because there's any time constraints, but just so that we're not just going in circles.
Yeah.
We fully understand and, and honor your, your decision that you're not comfortable with signing this and you feel you can't, you can't, fine. But we do have a situation, which I presented, we have two buildings on one piece of land. It, it's the cleanest way. We have reasons why this should work because it was like this for almost eighty years. And now because two people, one person bought both pieces and didn't have a check aborted. How do we get to the next step, if possible? How do I get the ZBA to hear us? We're not proposing to build anything, so we don't, we can't get a denial. So we can request the board to give us a, a letter to go to ZBA? If we, we'll withdraw it and we just request for, uh, for a letter from the planning board to let us be heard by the ZBA.
I think you misunderstood. He was making sure if we denied it, it wasn't gonna deny you for two years. That's what the question was. He was trying to make sure if we denied this, that it was gonna, not gonna deny you for two years.
Oh, 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 I didn't understand. Oh, D B A does that.
Yeah, some of the stuff where we deny it, it, it automatically has prejudice attached. That's, that was the question. That's what, yeah.
Oh, oh, no. Hi, hi, Brian. I misheard on that.
So we can still, we could still vote to deny. We were just clarifying it wasn't gonna deny for a lucky period of time.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mr. Murray, you had a comment?
So to go to the zoning board of appeals, there are three major criteria. It is the, um, the shape of the land, topography.
Soils.
Soils. They have to have a hardship. You have to have it. There are actually four or five, but the others are administrative. So their hardship is the shape of the land because it's a very tiny, narrow piece that fronts on Williamsville Road. That's their hardship. The planning board doesn't need to create or advise on that. That's a pretty pragmatic thing right then and there. Shape of the land.
Yep, uh, the, the question, um, the question from the board is ultimately just procedural. Um, because the, the concern that I hear from the applicant is that, um, they want to make sure that they have something, uh, justiciable for when they go to the ZBA and a denial for us based upon zoning reasons. My understanding is that the applicant's correct is that.
That's why we're going to them.
That would make that justiciable. Whereas if we just, if they just withdrew it and it was out, they wouldn't necessarily have, the ZBA wouldn't have a legal obligation to, and I'm not giving you specific legal advice. I'm just trying to make sure.
No, 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 we're not giving you that. No.
We're doing the right, making the right decision here. But.
Running it from one step to the other.
But that does sound like it makes sense. Um. I guess, uh, I guess might as well ask the board, does, does that sound like a plan that makes sense? And do we need any additional information from our consultant before anybody makes a, a motion?
So we're not approving the A and R without prejudice?
We're gonna reject, uh.
Or reject the A and R?
Reject the A and R? No, so we're gonna not approve.
You're gonna accept their withdrawal.
We're gonna.
No, I think we want to deny it, right? You're gonna accept their withdrawal. The planning board is not gonna take action.
Well, that, that. Oh, I, I guess because it's an approval not required.
You're.
This, this gets into just word gymnastics, but, but they matter, which is why we're beating this horse.
You, you only have three choices with an A and R. You can approve it and sign it. You can reject it for minor revisions or you can reject it outright. That's all you have. And if they're withdrawing it, then you don't need to take action,
Could we give?
but you can render an opinion.
So what, yeah.
You have, could we table this and give you, you have twenty-one days to make a decision unless the owner says, take all the time you need and we can put a date up ahead. If we put a date up ahead and in the meantime, we leave this on the table, I'll fix the paperwork that it's to, I'll fix that part. And then we go to ZBA. We come back with ZBA saying, we'll allow you to do this, but that document and this document, would that satisfy this board?
Well, we don't meet again for, until September. Um, I, I think you would need to leave it as three because you're now asking to form a third non-conforming lot.
Oh, yes. Oh, that's true. That's true. Because we're not asking for a possible.
Yeah, so it, it would be September fourth is when our next meeting is. So we'd be way outside of the twenty-one day deadline and.
So we have to give you a written.
Agreement by the parties to date certain, does that work on that?
The, the ZBA has forty-five days in which to hold a public hearing from the date of submission. And then they have ninety days after the close of the public hearing to render a decision. So they have a hundred and thirty-five days to act on a zoning board of appeals application under law. Now, they don't have to take that amount of time, but they do have that amount of time.
Why don't we just reject it and give them the rejection to take to the zoning board? Yeah, I, I'm, I believe the rejection is the right answer so that there's something firm for you to take to the zoning board.
And that was my question. If we don't reject it, do, does the ZBA even have to hear it?
Yeah, because it's not justiciable because there isn't, uh, there isn't a, um, an actual conflict at issue. So.
Well, they can appeal your, they can appeal your action.
But they can't appeal.
They can appeal your action and of the same.
Just the rejection.
But there's no action if they withdraw.
Correct.
And that's my point.
So we have to reject that.
That's what I wanted to ask.
You don't, you don't know if they offer a withdrawal, you can accept the withdrawal. They still have a hardship.
But we haven't made an action that's appealable because then withdrawing is not an action. We have to.
So my job is to make sure everybody's treated fairly.
Yeah.
And primarily, I try and protect you. In this instance, no action on your part, from my perspective, is a better protection for you. Action to reject it works better for them and really doesn't give you much exposure anyway. So then they can appeal to the zoning board of appeals. We don't agree that the planning board made the right decision and we have a hardship. But if they don't do both of those things, then they, they could have a problem.
And so I, I would, I would suggest that somebody, this has been a long one I don't need.
Yes. That's what happens when I get a motion.
Yeah, I would reject the A and R based on it creating a third non-conforming lot. Excellent. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Excellent. Any discussion on the motion?
I have a question just for clarification.
Yeah.
If they go to the ZBA, they're not gonna be actually appealing, asking for an appeal of our decision.
No.
They're gonna be asking for relief from the zoning regulations.
Exactly.
Okay, make sure that it's understood.
No, they could appeal your decision.
They could, they could be appealing our decision as well, but that's not their only act.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that would be the wrong path to take, yeah.
Right, thank you.
They could, if I may, they could, they could indicate that this rejection prompted them to go to the ZBA to review that relief that they're actually asking, which then would resolve the situation.
Which is really what they're asking for.
Exactly. And so I think that's the right approach. I think we have, we're still on the same, same right path here. And I'm hoping that this will resolve the matter for them.
So we all understand what we're doing. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
All right, calling a vote.
Shaggy, right?
Malia, aye.
Dak, aye.
And the chair is aye. Um, so we have rejected the, uh, the request. But yeah, we obviously talked about what the course is there, so I'm not gonna beat that dead horse any further. But, uh, by the way, you guys know.
Well, we will get something from the planning board so we can start the process.
Yeah, I'll, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll send a confirmatory message to you. Yep.
Plus it's on record.
Yeah.
All right, when we go into, okay, this, this is good. We'll see you in whatever time it takes to get through it.
As it is, yeah. All right.
Take your free time.
Yep.
Sorry to make it complicated. I apologize. That is, that is.
It is what it is. Just like that law is what it is. You know, I think it is what it is.
Pick and choose parts of the law.
Bites people in this. It takes, it extinguishes value without them knowing it. You know, they've been paying taxes on independent lots all this time. The assessor's got no obligation to pay attention to the merger doctrine. Paying attention to the parcels.
Yeah. So we have, actually.
I've done this exact situation in the last forty years a couple of times, just so you know, so you know.
And I banged it.
I've seen it happen too, but.
I don't like to bang. I'd like to get things done.
All right, well, we've moved on for the item. We actually, we actually do have one more item for the evening.
Thanks, folks.
Yep.
Good night.
Sorry. The, uh, the select board has asked us, um, if we would be willing to comment on the, um, on the forty-eight Gardner Road project because there's been some issues related to commercial zoning and availability of properties for commercial use. Um, and specifically, they're looking for a comment that we're committed to looking at and evaluating those issues. Uh, and they would like us to take a position on this and, um, and state that position publicly. So I had sent, um, a message to everybody that I was hoping to kick off the discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now Alec, uh, right after signing his contract, actually sent us over some, uh, proposed changes. So before we even get to Alec's proposed changes, which I think make it a much better statement, um, I wanted to take the temperature of the, the planning board on, uh, on first, um, do we wanna do this as a, a planning board? Is, uh, is it something that a majority of us support? Or support in some way where it's worth us going in and having a conversation about this language?
I am personally in favor of the forty-eight Gardner Road project and I've wanted to change the zoning in the town for a long time now to support more commercial space. So I'm in favor of both of those things, but I'll let everyone else speak.
I also am in favor of it.
I'm personally in favor of it, certainly. Um, you know, it's ironic that we were just talking about this merger doctrine and, you know, the acreage involved here with forty-eight. There's actually two parcels, if I'm not mistaken, by my review of the, of the maps, of the, of the assessor's maps. And in this particular case, there's the forty-eight Gardner LLC, which owns the three point, I wanna say eight acres, which consists of the, the building that's in question. But there's also a triangular parcel of point five acres that's on the corner of High Street and, and Gardner Road.
Mm-hmm.
I believe that this purchase and sale agreement, because of meetings and I, and the things I've heard, it, it consists of about four and a half to five acres of land. So the three point eight plus the point five five acres would make up the four and a half roughly acres. Um, it's interesting that the forty-eight Gardner LLC owns the larger piece or the three point eight eight and a different individual check aborted, in other words, owns this small point five eight, point five five acre triangle. If you look at the mailing addresses of the two owners, the trust and the individual, they're both at the same address in Carlisle. So what this owner did was he actually check aborted to preserve the independent status of that. of that nonconforming point five five acre corner lot. It's exactly what these guys didn't do. He did it. So it's something to look at, uh, if you wanna look at the tax maps. Um, just as, just as a point of interest that we just came out of a meeting and this, but I'm in favor of this certainly. That, that triangular piece is included in the piece. It gives more exposure to that parcel for the town and I, you know, for potential expansion uh, of, of that section of building into that vacant triangle.
I, I wanna make sure that I express my neutrality, uh, as a Planning Board member and not as an individual. I think as an individual, I have some very strong feelings about the benefit that this, this does offer the town. The only concern that I bring here is part of the wording, and I'm hoping that maybe the wording that Alec and you have come together may address that. As a Planning Board, I feel like we don't want to use wording, uh, in a document such as this one, where we may potentially be thought as prejudicing actions, future actions, that are all gonna be dependent on actions that have to do with, you know, what, where are we putting the commercial lots and so forth, based on us simply saying, we support this here. And as a result of the support, we're basically coming in and afterwards somebody's saying, hey, we knew that you were going to do this here because you supported this here from the very beginning. So, I, again, the word, I, I, I generally agree very strongly with all of the items that you have there. What really concerns me is that very first sentence where we basically say, we actually support this. All of the other items that are in there, I actually really agree with them. But as a Planning Board, I think we need to maintain, maintain an, an aspect of neutrality that is not gonna come bite us in the future, where constituents are gonna say, well, you were always in favor of this here and you expressed it, without even having heard what the hearing came, you know, the, the, the August twenty-second hearing came out and, and, and heard everybody's opinion.
I think that we can say that we're in support of the idea and the project while still maintaining that neutrality. Like, for example, we said we're in support of, um, community, of the elderly housing, we were in support of low income housing.
Sure.
That doesn't mean we're gonna approve every project that comes to our, our table.
Correct.
So I think it's still okay for us to say we're in support, if we are, um, while still maintaining the neutrality.
Yeah.
So, I think some of Alec's, um, changes will, will potentially help some of this, because what he did is, um, he made some, and, and this came in minutes before we met. He made some small changes to the doc, well, moderate changes to the document to tie it directly to our master plan that he apparently read in like fifteen minutes. But he found specific, um, calls to action and, um, and, uh, recommendations in the master plan and made the letter more about that. So, um, uh, I guess I'll, probably the most efficient thing to do is just read it aloud, unless everybody has a computer with them.
I think that would be a very useful case for me, uh, right off the bat.
So here's the, the red line version, and I, I, you probably should look at the wording or the first sentence, but it is, "The Hubbardston Planning Board supports the, supports the purchase of forty-eight Gardner Road and recognizes its potential impact on the town's quality of life and future economic development. The Board is dedicated to collaborating with businesses and the community to create opportunities for new businesses and develop a plan to retain existing businesses that preserves the character and identity of Hubbardston. We believe in a future for Hubbardston where it is a compelling place to live and work." Uh, and then here are some changes from, from Alec. Forty-eight Gardner Road is located in the commercial zoning district and could be constructed by right with no site plan approval. Next paragraph, "Hubbardston has a strategic focus on enhancing its economic landscape and protecting its residents. Uh, numerous plans and reports, including the master plan, the Quabin Educational and Municipal Partnership Recommendation Report, emphasize the importance of sustainable growth, infrastructure improvements, and attracting diverse businesses. Um, we cannot ignore the world changing around us and merely hope that our tax base will take care of itself. In particular, our recent master plan update calls for the consolidation of municipal services into shared facilities. Action SF two point three and prioritization of public safety facilities, action SF two point two. We actually voted on that when that came through in the original version, so that, that is a vote supported by the Planning Board, um, that he's tying back to there. Uh, so, back to the document. "We expect the, we expect the purchase of forty-eight Gardner Road to be a net positive to the community in the long run and increase property values and enhance the town's quality of life. Investments in public safety facilities such as modern fire police stations contribute to a secure environment, making Hubbardston a more attractive location for both residences, uh, residents and businesses. These improvements not only boost property values, but also enhance the overall impression of the town as a safe and thriving community. Um, we expect the purchase of forty-eight Gardner Road to launch a review of how we look at commercial space in Hubbardston." So he changed the language so that we're not, um, precisely committing to specific things, but going along with what's already in our master plan in this part here. So, restarting that paragraph, which is the last one. "We expect the purchase of forty-eight Gardner Road to launch a review of how we look at commercial space in Hubbardston, a review that the Board believes is long overdue. To help take steps towards a thoughtfully planned future, the town has engaged a part-time planner to help identify economic barriers and conflicts within the current zoning laws and practices. Um, we look forward to working with the planner to explore grants and partnerships to fund future economic development projects and zoning efforts to ensure a vibrant and resilient local economy."
That's some marketing.
Yeah, um, but, um, I, I like the changes that he made, because, um, uh, to, to his point, we already voted as a board to support a consolidation. And granted, it was a previous board, but it is the town's master plan that we're still cleaning up. But we did vote, um, already to support the consolidation of municipal services and shared facilities and a prioritization of, um, public safety facilities, so.
But as written and clarified, he really brings, the original author really brings in all the, the work that you've done, and he kinda even more highlights the fact that you're addressing the concept of approving of purchasing of a municipal facility in conjunction with everything else that you're doing. I think it, I think it's a really well-written document.
Yeah, to Francois's earlier point, um, I think we, uh, cause I, I know there was an issue that you had with the initial sentence, but I think we can, we can perhaps move or take the thought that we express, um, in our longstanding vote, um, to something along the lines of the, the Planning Board, uh, that has previously voted and supported the consolidation of municipal services and shared facilities in the master plan, along with the prioritization of public safety facilities. And recognize that this effort to purchase forty-eight Gardner Road is in direct support of those, um, items we've previously stated or something along the lines of that.
I, I recognize that that would be a very good way in which we can introduce it without necessarily putting ourselves as, you know, the, the cheering, the, the cheering crowd on this year. I understand the role of the select board, that they have to be in front as, as leaders on this year.
Yeah.
I had actually proposed something which was even much simpler than that, which was, "The Hubbardston Planning Board recognizes that the purchase of forty-eight Gardner Road will impact the town's future economic development, that, and that then the rest of it stays the same." But I like what you're presenting here, because it puts some context in terms of what we as a board already have agreed to in the past. And it, 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 it takes that, it takes a more neutral approach, in, in my opinion. And again, it's not that I don't believe in this. I, I do believe personally that there's a very good reasons for one, for, for us as members of this board to support something like this here. But again, I think we gotta be very careful with how we are perceived as a board, uh, vis a vis what we're gonna be taking actions on in the future, and that's the only comment I have.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, and yeah, I, I agree with you saying the planning, excuse me, the select board is obviously, uh, being very much engaged in the political process on this, and for us to tie it specifically back to the facts and the fact that we've been long supporting this type of project, and this project is that type of project. Uh, it's within the scope of what we've been doing, and it's not us specifically saying we've had a full thorough investigation of this on all the merits, so it's-
Yeah, I like the way you phrased it, and like, you just summarized, and I would be okay with that wording.
Okay, so, um, I guess just, if, unless anybody has anything else I would like to propose, we should just do a motion to, uh, issue a letter, as discussed, using the base language, with the first sentence changed to address the fact that, uh, this project, um, addresses issues that have long been identified by the Planning Board as priorities for the town.
Okay, I'd be willing to make that motion.
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we'll call in the vote.
Schneider, aye.
Tamalia, aye.
Dak, aye.
And the chair is aye. So I'll, um, I'll finalize that statement and, um-
Send it out.
Send it out.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Excellent, so, start.
Who's writing, uh, the commentary for the country hymn?
Uh, I will put together a quick note on that. Ultimately, that would be Patricia, but Patricia's on vacation this week.
Okay.
Um-
I didn't know if you wanted me to do that or not.
That's a good question. I'll, I'll start an email thread with you, me and Patricia, because I know with Patricia and her shared duties as an executive assistant at the moment, the answer might be to, to push it off. Um, but I'll let them, uh, I'll let the administrative staff make the decision on that, before I just go spend town money. So, all right, so, um, I don't think, uh, I believe that's the full agenda. So, I guess any, um, any additional comments for any, uh, just to go by? We're skipping, uh, the other item five agenda items, uh, because now that we have Alec on board, uh, what we're going to do is after Alec does his assessment phase, he's gonna come in and he's gonna talk about the issue tracker, well, he's gonna combine the issue tracker list, the DLTA list, and Nate's list of projects into one single consolidated list. And then we as a board will have a discussion on what we prioritize. Um, we'll probably even do an exercise where we do like a weighted matrix, where everybody assigns a number to projects and we see how that goes up, because it'd be really awkward to just vote through each one individually to do a ranking. So, um, I think some kind of forced choice matrix would be the right way. But we'll, we'll talk about that, and I think that that would be, that'd be a pretty fun meeting. Um, and then, um, I can just check and make sure nobody hopped online with any public comments. And does anybody in the room or anybody, uh, anybody have any comments from the board for anything that was not on the agenda? Got three things to bring up.
Just a quick, uh, question. Next meeting is?
Next meeting is scheduled for the fourth of September, I believe, or less.
September fourth, okay.
Yep, that'll be the, uh, the first one today.
That's the first Wednesday. Okay, cool, thank you.
Excellent, so, that puts us at our last item, which is a juror. Would anyone make a motion to adjourn? Here in the first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Here in the first and second, uh, non-debatable.
I would if I could.
Uh, calling a vote.
Schneider, aye.
Tamalia, aye.
Dak, aye.
And the chair is aye. We are adjourned at seven forty-two.